Bingo. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Study Session of Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. Two items on the agenda. First item on the agenda is discussion regarding appointments for the Comprehensive Plan Ad Hoc Committee. So, that's why I gave you this. Set of sheets because that's where we ended up last time. And we were in the middle of a conversation as to who to move from. There were some people that were coming, Tara Cassius and Derek Rosendahl, that went from Strong Towns over to Comp Plan. And that's where we kind of ended the conversation. So, and then you had.
Taylor Davis was on Strong Towns.
Taylor Davis.
And the Strong Towns slide.
Yeah, I don't see him. Do I?
No.
Oh, at the bottom? Easy, peasy, squeezy.
But I think he actually did make it to the committee. This list might be lower.
Okay. And Taylor Davis. So. Why don't we just open it up to conversation of what Taylor Davis comes from for? For just comments, however you feel.
Well, I kind of remember that when we left this last time, we were going to maybe circle back into some small group meetings and maybe digest some of this, not in a public forum. The heartburn I have, what I don't want to get into is to go through this list of names and start saying, this person deserves to be on, this person does not, for our entire community to see. So, I thought that we were going to meet as small groups and kind of hash some of that stuff out and then come back with a revised list.
That was my understanding too.
Okay, I missed, it went through my ears. So, okay, well, let's plan then, now that you've got the lists back. Let's plan. We've got two weeks, I guess, to be able to plan some dates that we can sit down and do that.
Some groups of three or four?
Yeah.
Like come in or do Zoom?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we could even do that.
And we're also missing two council members.
If we get groups of three, we're cool.
Yeah, we can get them on the schedule though, when it works for them. So, yeah, we'll get that scheduled here in the next week. Try to get the lion's share of those conversations set up with just different groups of three or four. So, you guys can just lay it all out on the table, just among you, and get some consensus and start inking them on paper.
And there are some more persons now that have also applied.
Okay.
And we can put them on the bottom of this Comp Plan.
That's good.
Thing and, I mean, that's just an easy, squeezy, however you want to do it.
Were there applications?
Yeah.
The new ones, B and D, FTP File Manager?
They should be. I think Brenda's been trying to upload those as they come in.
Yeah.
So, Mayor, when we meets, City Manager, when we meets, we have all the applications of the new folks who have applied?
On your tablet, yeah. And so, and so, put them in there, those persons that are there. If there's somebody that you don't think is applicable to that, let's talk about it in those meetings and do it. And that works. To me, it's public information once you sit it out there.
It is, I just don't, I don't want to do the back and forth. In all honesty, I don't have a lot of heartburn with most of these names. I just, I don't want to.
I was going to ask, I know that we didn't have quite the breakdown in representation. And we also have Councilmember Ball for Ward One. So, are some of those new names Ward One names as well?
Did you put any in?
I have not. And I was wondering when this got, if it's too late for applications? I don't know if Brandy had put out requests for people prior to leaving.
I believe she did, but got zero.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got zero. And I went around and got as many people as I knew that belonged to Ward One somehow.
Is it too late to, like five, like 72 hours to add some applications?
It is not. And we opened it back up again and just left it open and as people came in. The one thing that I, oh, yeah, you're right. He wasn't in on the prior discussion. The one thing I'm trying to do is make sure that we have no more than 23. I would rather 20. And we kind of divided them up into voting members and non-voting members. The voting members would be the 20 to 23, however we come down with a number. It's got to be an odd number. And then those persons, the other persons that are on there, that are put on this alternate list.
Right.
Are still members of that deal. They just don't vote. And I just couldn't think of a non, a word that said, other than non-voting. And so, I used the word alternate. They have, the, there's also these persons that are down here that I'm calling partners, and they're non-voting persons. But they're subject matter experts in the things that we may need. If we look at the guy that we've got down here from OU Property, he's also the airport, he's also all kinds of other stuff. So, when we come around that area and we think, are we messing with? Because the idea is there's 13 plans that are on the outside, that we had one plan and everybody else had one plan. Take all 13 plans and put them into one. And the word comprehensive to me means that's that list. And so, we don't want to stand, we want to, before we do anything around OU Property, talk to OU Property guy. If we do anything around the VOTech, if we're doing anything around schools. And as you're projecting, or as we're projecting growth, wherever that is, we better coordinate with the schools to make sure that they have enough seats for those little ones that are going to come up and start through the school system. And are we planning that correctly? And so, it's to be able to get those inputs in there. They're not voting members because it just gets too wonky with over 20 kind of a thing.
And the application, is it available on the city website?
Is there a link?
Or in commissions, just in the drop-down menu?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
In Porterville, California, a number of years ago, where there was not really good coordination between the city and the schools, we came into the office and opened up the newspaper and it said, hey, look, here's the site of Granite Hills High School, the new high school that the school district's going to build. And we looked at each other and thought, that piece of, there's no road, there's no water, there's no sewer. But they bought it and then said, well, city, you're going to have to help us. We had to issue a $20 million bond after the fact to put in road and sewer and water because the school went out and bought a piece of real estate for a new high school. No communication at all. It was a pain in the neck.
Yeah.
And we don't ever want to have to work frantically like that because the school's coming.
Not sure, normal citizens would want to do bailout like that.
But I was going to say with this lost bond, we didn't pass any bonds to build new schools, so we're kind of fixed.
Other than the Aviation Academy, which will be one brand spanking new school.
No new high school in East Norman or Southeast Norman or West Norman or anywhere else.
Be next, he's got to wait until he can get his capacity back. For 345 million.
Be a great site.
But that's, and that's the thing, I think, that I've been trying to work towards, is making sure that all the governmental agencies that we have here in Norman are working together as best we can. I mean, sometimes we don't have any difference in it. But we haven't had a history of that for a while. And we're all the same people and all, let's use our money wisely.
Same taxpayer.
Same taxpayer.
That's right.
So, other thoughts on, or anything else? There's a, that sheet, Councilmember Ball has a, the way that I chose them. And then there's another discussion, and you're right. We, I didn't do anything by Ward. What I did was try to pick the best person, getting them out of the wards, get those in there fastest. But I was trying to pick the best person for that job, as if it were a job interview. And I was hiring that person to do something. But what that did when we ended up, if you look at your list, you'll see that there were more threes, is that right? More Ward threes, six and eight. Because one of the, the thoughts on me was education. So, others have said, well, there's different kinds of education. It doesn't have to be formal. Okay? That's a true statement. And, and so, you know, we can, we can move these people however we want, within reason. But it's trying to get, if I look down, the things that are people on here that I'm purposely doing because they're engineers or they're water experts or they're people who are builders and things like that that'll help us do stuff. Some are attorneys. Some are, you know, college professors. Lee Hall was a college professor. So, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of persons that are on here that I was hoping would make a good soup to get them in there. But Ward One does not have but one person, and that's Siobhan Owen. You said she moved to five.
She's always been in five. The one person was Mitch.
Evans?
Mitch.
Ms. Bismarck? Siobhan Evans?
Yeah, she's always been in five.
Son of a guy, I did not know that. But yeah, she's a real estate broker and yeah.
Calla Williams Realtor of the Year.
Can you send me that application? I pulled it up on the site, it says the forum is closed to new submissions.
Hmm.
No, no.
Do you know how to do that?
I emailed you the link a minute ago, did you?
I didn't use the link, I just.
Try to click the link, see if it gets us to the same spot. If so, we'll call Tim and tweak that.
Yeah, that'd be an easy.
Oopsie. You're not going to be able to put anybody on the list anymore. Sorry.
That's a chance.
That expired.
I would say it's.
Okay, that worked.
It keeps a mind structure we have that Garver presented because there's an affordable, or actually a housing market one. But they're broken down by sanitation is one, I think, and they're grouped weird.
Yes.
Not quite that. It was the study session we have with Mary Elizabeth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's where I got this.
Executive, 15 people on executive.
I might have taken a picture.
No, I was thinking of the way they're actually broken out.
Oh, with the subcommittees at the bottom of it?
Because you have the chair.
She's talking about the presentation that Garver gave. Is there a possibility we can get a copy of that?
Sure, I'll text Mary Elizabeth and have her.
I think Brenda already sent it, but we'll be up on rehab it because Mary sent it.
Perfect.
You're talking about that diagram?
Yes, exactly, that one. Yeah, so transportation, water sanitation, stormwater and a housing.
And so, it's building those buckets up where those, we can digest the material more easily by more teeth, you know, top of the thing. And, and we don't have to use these subgroups, but these are pretty good subgroups. They may be, we may need to shift them around, it's whatever. And we maintain, whatever the committee does, they, they, they talk to us. So, there's nothing that can get past us. If we sat down and thought, well, the builders are trying to push that over to where we have less, whatever. They can't do it unless we tell them that's fine. I don't see that happening. And, and so, I think it's halfway foolproof, but we'll find out.
I think, I think your method does make sense and is having, you know, people with backgrounds on there is a good thing generally. But I think you know, you've lived in Norman long enough too to know like east and west and a committee that's developing a long-range plan that's mostly made up of folks that live on one side of town. Other people are going to think, see, it's just they're going to do, they're going to make decisions for us and they don't live in this part of town, they don't know anything about this part of town, they've never been over here.
They wouldn't say that in five, would they?
Well, since you brought it up, that has been a big concern. So, you know, talking with the constituents in Ward Five, you know, looking at the list and, you know, I think it's well-balanced, but I would like to see more, more individuals who'd like to look and preserve the rule of the large ag lands out in Ward Five. Because I think the most important thing, you know, going forward is, is to have those voices. Because I think traditionally, the committees have always been formed with laymen and experts as well, too, as well. And so, the list is full of experts. And I would like to see the list full of laymen who have, because look, these are small business owners. Whether you have a ranch or craft farm that has 10 chickens and a rooster, they still sell their eggs and they're still small business. So, I would like to see the list to reflect Ward Five as well. There are a lot of important things that they can bring to the table. So, I think, Stephen, that was a good segue into this conversation. And that also includes parts of Ward One and parts of seven, too, that are in a rural area. And so, look, so when Ward Five traditionally says that they're not paying, they are ignored, it goes back to the water rates. You know, Ward Five as a block has always voted against those type of things here. And 95% of us are on well water. Okay? And so, we have told that the city desperately needs to have this water rate passed because it's, you guys need it. And I think if we have individuals from Ward Five who want to protect the rural, at least represent the rural farmers and the ranchers out there, might go a long ways in getting the vote yes in June because we need it. We need the water rate passed. And so, I don't want to say Ward Five, you know, will vote against it, they don't have representation. But I would like to see Ward Five vote for the water rate increase as a block. If they see, and we can show, the city can say, hey, we care about what you guys feel in the rural part of East Norman here. That's what I'd like to see. And that's going to be a win, win for all of us at this table.
Yeah, I agree. And, and we spoke to, or I spoke to Strong Towns and told them that my personal feeling, I know I'm one vote among many, but my personal feeling is 48th Street is the end of the world. And then after that, it becomes rural. It's just, it's been that way, that's where the utilities go up to, that's where everything is at. Stephen and I, or Councilmember Holman and I had a discussion prior to this about running fire mains, Dan Munson's idea.
What's that?
Running fire mains out there, Dan Munson's idea that he came up with. See if that's even feasible, but we haven't talked to the.
Well, you know what, Mayor? We had talked about that when I moved into Ward Five, like back in 2007, 2008. And there's a reason why everyone out there has ponds on their property. This is the reason why. I go, why does everyone in Ward Five have ponds?
You draft out of it.
Because if there's a fire out there, they can just stick that hose in the pond and that's where the water supply comes from. So, so I would like to see, Chris, once we pass, look, I think we have to get over the hurdle of getting the water rate in, passed first. But I would like to see water mains, if it's feasible, going out there past 60th, you know, in those areas there. I mean, that's a thing for the future, but I think the majority of the folks that live out that way would like to see a water main at every intersection, someplace close, because they complain about the insurance, you know?
Sure.
You know, the insurance, when they calculate your rates, is how far are you away from the nearest water main?
When we were on 24th Street, that was the biggest thing. Because we were all the way away from anything. And, and I don't know, part of my discussion in that's going to be not starting at 60th Street, but starting at maybe 90th or something like that and running both ways. So, but that's, that's another, I get in trouble for not having something on the agenda.
I was taking the same thing.
Do we have an, is there an excellent agenda? I can't find one.
Yeah. I think professional background is very important too, but also lived, lived experience. Maybe someone's not an architect or a planner, but they've lived in the same neighborhood and wherever in Norman for 25 years, 30 years. They are very familiar with that part of town and issues that it has and what they would like to see happen to it in the future.
Well, ask a carpenter if the plan's correct. He'll tell you in about two seconds, I can't build that. However you want.
I also got a good mix.
Doing that, I think, will be good. The other thing that was on the Councilmember Ball was the, they had to be Norman residents.
Right, I saw that.
Okay, and so, I don't know if we, if we necessarily need to make that hard and fast, but that's what we kept with so far. If there was somebody that came in. And then that reminded me when I talked about carpenter. We had one guy that's an excellent carpenter, an excellent remodeler, but he lives in Moore.
Yeah, yeah. Talking about, very good, very good guy.
Yeah, and smart, so it just.
Hasn't invested a lot of money in Norman, but doesn't live here.
It just, so, we, we can do those. I'd just like for us to be, when we launched this thing, we talked about it last time. This is, this is basically our reputations online. If we goof this up, we're toast.
Next 30 years, 25 years of development, planning and all that.
There was a plan that was done prior to the 2025, after the 2025 plan and prior to this one starting, that hasn't been workable. And so, it can't be used and I'd rather not have that horse collar on me. Or any of us. I think we can make a good, good thing out of this. Further thoughts? All right.
Can I just speak to that, the water fire hydrant thing? That was one of the good parts of us bringing that well water in because we could add the fire hydrants.
Right.
As we laid those lines.
Right.
But to lay additional lines out that way, it's like $800,000 a mile.
Wow.
For fire, it would, it would not be cost-effective for us. But we did lay them, you know, I think we're pretty much north of Lindsay, all the way to 108th and Franklin. They're kind of coming in on those lines and we did put them spread out to, you know, as fire hydrants. And we use them as blow-offs, a way to service our lines.
Oh, a fire hydrant.
So, it's kind of a dual purpose.
It was a good thoughts.
But let's, but I mean, is there value in at least having maps where everybody understands where they are?
Sure, sure. That's what David Munson was speaking to, is he knew we already put them out there and so he was saying that was a benefit.
But yeah, we'll zip you a PDF and it just, because I have no idea how many of them out there we've got, but.
I think we should put ponds on everyone's properties out there.
Water retention too, so.
Not everybody wants ponds. There was a lady last time that didn't like the pond that was intermittent or whatever you call a pond that dries up. And her horse got sore feet off of that thing, anyway.
Well, that would be horrible. I just want a pond where I can stick a hose and go fishing on the weekends.
Okay, we'll see about that.
Not sure they tell you fish.
What's that?
Said, I'm not sure they tell you fish.
Well, you don't want to catch.
Actually, you're out there on a floaty and you gotta, you know, you're just having a good time on a Sunday afternoon after mowing your 10 acres.
Yeah. It, it's moved to item number two, if, if we're done. Okay. Item number two, discussion regarding City Council meeting procedures for Council handbook. That's a good general topic. And the things that I would like to discuss were, what do we do with consent docket? I had, I put in there, basically Monday at 4 o'clock and then I was thinking we'd make it into a rule, but had been advised that it would be easier to make it into a best practice. Because sometimes something might goof up and then you've got a rule that stops you from doing something. It just, my thing is, let's give everybody a fair amount of time to get their arguments either way, listen to the arguments, whatever we need to do. And be able to come to council meeting and discuss business instead of jamming something. What, what time do you want, do you like the idea or what do you want to do with it? I see nodding heads, but.
No, I think, go ahead.
Just going to say, I think, I think it's reasonable that by four or five into business on Monday, that you've let staff know, that any of us have let staff know, if we want something taken off, we get the agenda on Friday afternoon. I think three days is adequate enough time to have figured out if you want to take something off or not. But I don't want to have, I agree, like, having a rule and something comes up Tuesday and you need to take something off for some reason.
Well, we had the downtown bit, remember? And they, because the county folded.
Right, so that's a good example. We don't want to have it be like too, like, it has to, but.
But half of them are, you know, I want to vote no. Well, if you know you're going to vote no, you probably know that by Monday at, you know, 4:00 PM, whatever the time is that you decide, if that's really the issue. And that does keep down a lot of the banter. Because you don't have to vote 9-0 on everything, so.
Look, at the end of the day, I think we're serving the public and the citizens. And we owe it to both sides that we give them enough time and opportunity to come and put their name on the list. You know, some of the folks that wanted to speak against the extension of the warming shelter didn't have the opportunity to come so and do that. So, so really, I think it is a best practice that, I say 5 o'clock is the end of the business day for most government offices here. That's reasonable to say that, you know, it's a best practice.
That's 24 hours.
24 hours before, before the next day begins. And I think 5 o'clock is a good time to start.
Well, and the reason I chose four was to give the ladies the time to be able to put it on, on the tablets sort of thing.
Super women here, but I'll go with.
I don't do it.
I will go with four.
We would likely also amend the agenda and just take it off consent. Yeah. So, 24 hours in advance helps, but. Yeah, yeah.
Well, four is good, then if that's the case, if we have to have 24 hours and give the, the staff enough time to change the agenda, to publish it, I'm okay with that.
Yes, sir. What about in the scenario where we've had a study session on the issue? You've looked around the table and said, we have consensus and everybody nods their head. But then after the meeting, somebody decides that, well, they didn't really have consensus and they want to vote no on it. Do we still let them take it off?
Well, you can't vote no against the consent agenda.
Right.
Right.
So, by saying you can't remove something from the consent agenda, you're basically saying you have to vote yes. And that's where I think we run into a problem because you all have the right to change your mind up to the minute of the, of the vote. And, and that shouldn't be predetermined.
Good, that's fair.
And then, I mean, it's going to happen. People change their mind or all of a sudden you get a phone call and says, do you realize?
Yeah, sure.
No, I didn't, so.
But we do our darnedest to read the room and find that consensus and, you know, and everybody walks out happy. We're feeling like we are on the same page. And, you know, there have been issues where, yeah, that's not my favorite, but if that's the direction council wants to go, I'm on board with that. So, it has happened where somebody may toy with the idea, but when they recognize what the consensus is, there is no objection to it being on consent calendar. It just, it just makes meetings, you know, that much more efficient.
Right, yeah.
So, to me, a consensus, or something going on the consent docket means there is a clear indication that I think everybody on the council in that meeting didn't object.
That's it.
If anyone had objected, then it wouldn't be on the consent.
And that's where I'm coming from.
Because clearly that person's not going to vote for it. So, but yeah, I would, I would, I would expect that, like I said in my comments last week, I just felt like it's unreasonable to do it right before the meeting starts because of the public being noticed, given notice about it. And for us too, like, okay.
Yeah, you might not have had time to prepare comments.
Well, to prepare to have a debate about this, you know, tonight and listen to public comment, respond and whatever. But yeah, that's, I think, like I said, Friday afternoon to Tuesday is a long time. I, I can't recall ever a council ever pulling something off at 6:30, like, right before the meeting. It's generally been the day before, at least that morning, you know, Tuesday morning.
Yeah, and, and that can happen. And that's, that still gives people enough time. It's a jam, but it still gives people enough time. I just, I just would like for us not to do that. Can I change gears? How about going, I'd like to stop us and stop the citizens from criticizing staff or council from the floor or from the dice. I made a mistake last time. I'm sitting there and I'm thinking about other things and the lady comes up and she's doing this and she's, but she's taking a staff member and crucifying him, basically. My job would have been, should have been to gavel her for doing that because we don't do that. But I really have nothing to stand on. So, with your, and nor do I have anything, we don't have it as, as a problem. But one council member yelling at another or calling them names or doing something, that's just not business-like. But what do you think about that?
I would say, be a little bit careful with it because I wouldn't want to prohibit people from being able to express their dissatisfaction with the city government or services we offer if they feel like we're not doing it right. I do think having something where we're not calling out staff, city staff member by name, like, I'm mad at this particular staff person and they're terrible or whatever, I think that's inappropriate for the meetings. But, I mean, people want to get up and say, I'm, whatever department is really just, I'm upset with what they're doing and you guys need to do something. I think that's fine, but the personal attacks against people, I don't think is.
How would you, well, let's.
Yeah, exactly.
You have to be, you know, you can't cut off speech because of their viewpoint, so we have to be careful. But we do have rules that were adopted back in 2005, back when Mayor Harrelson was mayor. And, and maybe it's just more prominently displaying these and using these to enforce it. Focus on the issue, do not make it personal, treat people with respect, do not embarrass or attack, you know?
And that's printed on every agenda.
Well, the whole resolution isn't, but we do have a piece of that on the agenda. And then we also have a slide that, that we usually have up.
This is no personal and.
That says focus on the issue, do not make it personal, you know, those kind of things. So, maybe it's just using those existing rules to try and.
That would satisfy me. I forget who was next.
I could speak to that part. So, I guess on meeting decorum, is that something that can be read before public comment or any comments that are open?
I do read a little blurb. I'd be glad to read more blurb. My thing is, is just trying to make it nicer.
And then the other part for Catherine about, so, could you be gavelled if you did bring someone's name instead of saying, I'm mad at utilities or Public Works? And, because I'm also thinking about some other situations that are going on in the city where there's groups of people that are angry at different departments and those are personal attacks. So, like, when can you gavel somebody? Is there a rule about?
It's up to the chair, but it's really just based on these rules. We just want to be careful that we're not infringing on someone's free speech rights. And so, you want to apply those rules consistently and not just based on their viewpoint. It's really based on behavior, not viewpoint. You can regulate time, you can regulate where they make comments and you can regulate. and you can regulate the manner in which they make the comments. But you have to be really careful not to regulate the content.
And when I was talking to that one gentleman, I didn't gavel him. I gave him a stop sign. He stopped talking and I said, "You can do this and you can do this, but those are your options." He chose, he says, "Well, I think you got my, I think you got my point." Yes, we did. And so, I don't have to, I don't like to gavel. I think that is absolutely the last straw. It is so dictatorial.
It's, yeah.
But I do do it.
Sometimes it calls for it.
No, I think the, I think the audience takes their cues from us, too, as well, so when they see us arguing with each other. And I think that, that the rule, you know, it's decorum, look, if you're sitting in a boardroom having these meetings here, we would never have these discussions and yelling back and forth. And so, when they see us do it, I think that gives them kind of permission to, okay, to do the same thing, too. Now, I agree with Mrs. Walker that we had to be careful about the First Amendment rights of the citizens here. But we should keep it on point and make sure that we steer away from the personal attacks, because everyone here in this room, the staff, I have no complaints. These guys have done wonderful for the city of Norman. If the citizens knew the work that goes behind the scenes to make the city run, unlike in Ward Five, everyone's appreciative on the private roads here, and they don't know all that. Okay, and so I think, you know, First Amendment thing aside here, stay on targets. If you have an issue with a department, you know, traffic and, you know, don't attack the person. I had to call last night and this lady is pretty upset about a situation, and then she pointed at a person. That's the time to have that conversation with me and with us. But publicly here, public servants do a lot for the city here, and we need to make sure that they address the situation and we steer them in that direction. What is the problem? How can we fix it? You know, we'll take care of your complaints. So, you know, I think we start by respecting each other on the dais and not attack staff and each other.
I would agree.
Can we take those rules, put them on the signup sheet, put a box next to the signature saying, "By signing this, I agree to abide by these rules."
Oh, I get it.
Yeah.
Problem solved.
A box, all right. And the only other thing that I'd ask about is Norman citizens, holding the, going from the podium. Let me phrase that into a way that's actually a sentence. Only Norman citizens speak from the podium, basically. If anybody else, if somebody who lives in Moore doesn't like what I'm doing because of whatever I'm doing, they can write me a letter. Actually, it's talking to Norman citizens. I get them. So do you. I mean, I just, but limit that down to Norman citizens. Is that...
There was a case in Midway City about six months ago where the city council had made it a charter, was it a charter amendment?
I remember that conversation with him, the city manager, about they had a string of people showing up to the podium and filling up all kinds of public comments. They don't vote, they don't live here, they don't pay the rates, they don't pay the fees, and they changed the rule. So, I'm sure that...
Is that a hard rule for us? I mean, so, as a city, Catherine, Mrs. Walker, is there a rule right now that would prevent someone who's not a citizen from speaking right now? Do we have that anywhere in writing?
No, we don't.
So, if we were to enforce that, like Midway City, would we have to pass an ordinance? Like, I think they did too, right?
Yeah, they did. I remember reading it. Now that you said that, Matt gave it, Matt, the mayor out there.
And so, is that something we want to consider? I mean, how many times do we have people from different cities come and talk? I mean...
It's...
Well, when we had the D-Fund the Police, I also got the video and...
It was about 50%.
About 50% were from Oklahoma City and out of town.
Yeah, and so that's, that's a good part of the question. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but that would be something worth...
Yeah, Mustang did it recently, too, a similar rule. They allow non-residents to speak if it's a matter that impacts them. I don't know how you measure that. You know, I don't know that we'd be checking your driver's license for proof of residence or anything like that, but it maybe is setting that expectation.
So, let's say there's a development on Indian Hills, a 350-foot radius, if it crosses into Moore, do they get to protest? So, I mean, I can see there are those geographic areas where if it's, if it impacts you, and you got this letter saying, "Come speak," those people...
Same would happen in Norman.
Yep.
And that wouldn't be, that wasn't kind of what I was going to address, but that's a good tale, too. Because it, you know, those kinds of things, if we don't think them through and we make a rule, it's not a good rule. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would want to be careful about that, too, because I wouldn't want to limit people that do business in Norman but don't live here from being able to speak. And then, I would like, just one, like, you know, former elected official like Mayor Rosenthal doesn't live in Norman anymore, but if she was back here and wanted to come speak at the podium, you know, I would appreciate hearing her perspective, or you, yours, if you moved out of Norman and came back and as a former mayor had something to say about something.
My next move is going to be to a boxing ground.
I figure probably not leaving Norman by now, if that happens. But that would be my concern about limiting it to just Norman residents is that I could see a lot of circumstances where not technically Norman residents might have something valuable to offer. Or they have business.
Resident or business owner. We've had language like that that kind of identified folks who, I mean, they have a vested interest in Norman.
Are you a former resident, current resident?
Yeah.
Business.
Do you have a visa?
Go ahead.
I was just going to add to that. When we talked about our towing and ticketing process, there are some people that weren't from in-state that had problems and definitely wouldn't want to bar people who are experiencing some less than ideal situations here from letting us know about it, which obviously the local businesses are. But like, it's kind of surprising, actually, who's getting towed. It's like local people, but also people visiting from out-of-state family or on their way through, visiting friends on their, on their way to their next state that they're moving to, so. But that's also one of those, it does affect somebody even if they aren't a resident. And I think you could parse that out in the type of comment they're about to deliver, so.
That's pretty much along the line. City manager, can you get the information from Midway City and see how they did theirs and what exclusions they had? I think that's the place to start.
Yeah, we'll grab up those around the metro. Yeah, and I've got a meeting with those city managers tomorrow at noon.
Thank you.
So, I'll hit them all up.
Fine, bud.
Yep.
I was thinking about students, too.
Yeah, well, students and residents.
And they may not live in Norman, maybe they live in Moore, but they go to OU. So, I'm thinking about just, Norman being like the hub of this, the South Metro and all the people that come into Norman that don't live here, but...
Parents of students, I mean, yeah.
We rarely ever hear from anybody, students rarely, or parents, or out-of-state people. But they do come up and, particularly if we're trying to, I believe that what we can do on particularly issues that we're going to have a lot of discussion on, is limit that conversation to 45 minutes. But I want to make sure enough people from both sides get in there to be able to do it. And that brings up that idea, how do you choose whether you're...
Yeah, I was going to bring that one up.
And that's, that's a good discussion.
I would maybe offer one solution is just, if we're gonna, I really don't like the idea of making people decide if they're for or against something, because, I mean, I've seen so many people, including myself, go into it thinking, "Yeah, I'm for it," and then you hear the public discussion, you hear comments that you didn't, that you didn't think about, and it's like, "Yeah, maybe that's not a good idea." And I think what we've seen in some prior meetings is like, people that are undecided sign up for being for or against it. And then, when they make up their mind and they give their comments, then the other side says, "That person just took up our time," and it's like, ah. So, it kind of just creates a problem. But maybe if there was a third category that was undecided, like you're for it, you're against it, unsure, in that way, it's...
They'd be more honest and check in a box, maybe.
It'd probably be mostly unsure people, I guess, but that might help address that. It's just to have that third category, so people that aren't really sure yet, but they're, they could be swayed by the, whatever conversation takes place.
And there's, there's another argument, too, that goes with that, is that we don't actually have to have public comment. Now, on each of the agenda items, I think we need to, that's, that's, that's got to happen. People have got to do that. But to have miscellaneous discussion isn't, isn't a requirement for any kind of...
True.
And so, that may be another thing we consider, unless we decided we wanted a forum of some sort or we wanted to do that, and we're going to purposely say, "We want to know what you guys are thinking about this." And then we open that up on purpose. But in general, don't have, we, I thought about this month or so, and I've tried to remember every conver, not every conversation, because some of them are too memorable. But the conversations that happen, that come across in miscellaneous comments, aren't necessarily constructive and they're not necessarily something that changes my mind. And it was Dan's deal that here's a, here's a brilliant idea of what should happen during miscellaneous comments. "You guys haven't thought about this. We want you to think about that." That's great, but that's not what we usually get. And so, that's another thing we can, we can debate on or think about. What are your thoughts on getting, just not doing miscellaneous comments? Yes, sir.
I'm like, I'm like Holman, Councilman Holman. I mean, I hate to take that right away from anybody, but I do think that if there were some ground rules in place, basically, if we, we've already discussed that item as an agenda item that night, we don't need you to come up in miscellaneous comments and...
Either bash you for the vote you just made.
Exactly. So, as long as it's fresh material coming, and miscellaneous comments, I think we leave it open as long as we need to, to make sure everybody has a chance to talk. But when we're duplicating things that already been said, that's, I think, cut out.
Maybe that's part of the thing that could be written into the rules, to say, you know, "Your time to speak about agenda items is during the item," and not to be rehashed as a, as a public comment.
It's probably a legal term for rehashing. I don't know.
I do find them, I know there's the good and the bad, but I do find them valuable when I do hear things I didn't know about. And they may not always be presented accurately during the time that they're given, but I appreciate the follow-up on some of the ones. I'm thinking about the Potts Family Farm one specifically. But had no idea that was an issue and dug into it more. But in general, I like them. I agree, having repetitive comments on items we've already covered, especially when the night is long, I could do without that. But in general, I really do appreciate them, even though you get all kinds of comments.
And...
Musical interludes.
No musical interlude. I just, a business meeting doesn't contain that. I keep on going back to, Apostle Paul makes that comment. He says, "All things are permissible, but not all things are beneficial. All things are permissible, but not all things build up." So what things, basically, his question is, what things are good for us to do and what things are whatever, even though we can do anything. And so, as I, as I look at that music, particularly with guitars that don't work well, doesn't do. And I know he's got a right to express himself, but there are better ways to do that, I think.
It is a business meeting, after all.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think if we, if it was established before the meeting, we're not going to allow instruments or whatever. I don't know if that gets infringey or not, but if they understand beforehand, you know, my heartburn about last week is that we have allowed it before with him and others, and as he's getting up to speak, we kind of shut him down. But if it's clear beforehand that this is the expectation of the meeting, it is a business meeting, and this is our kind of expectation of the entire meeting, including miscellaneous comments. Some cities call it new business.
Yeah.
And so, I don't, I don't know, we've sort of brought that up years ago, but hmm.
Yeah, we've not done that, because, well, yeah, I mean, usually that's an item for council to bring up new things. The trouble you run into that, with that, is you're now discussing something that wasn't agendized. And so, could you legally sweep by with it sometimes? Yeah, but that's not really how we...
Well, more so just changing the name of miscellaneous comment to new business, like specific, like, citizen, do you have new business that you want to bring up to us?
Because it already has a rule that we can't discuss or say anything.
Right, yeah. But, yeah, if you want to bring up an issue you're having, that it would be considered new business. Or having that, I guess, that title would imply to folks maybe more clearly that this isn't, this isn't miscellaneous comment. You can just say whatever, do whatever you want, that it's, kind of have to have some sort of direction. I don't know if that would help at all.
As long as it's not open mic night.
Yeah, but I do agree with Councilman Grant and, well, everyone, but it's a, I have found value in a lot of the comments over the years. And sometimes the quirky ones have helped bring a little bit of, I don't know, levity or calm the room down a little bit by making everybody laugh or something after a stressful, like contentious vote. So, there has been some positive to it. And sometimes, though, it is like the last, that miscellaneous comment at that podium, it's something I brag about all the time, about why I love city government so much, is that there is no public podium at the state Capitol or in Washington in Congress. There's no opportunity for the public to speak at all in front of those elected bodies. And we're the only one, I know that, I guess there is one at the county, but we're really the one that people think about. And that, for some folks, when they come to that podium, it's their last resort to get anyone to listen to whatever problem they're having. And they feel like nobody's calling back or emailing back, and their only opportunity to get in front of some, you know, captive audience, if you will, to express this problem they have. I remember, the one I remember the most is, a few years ago, I really had no idea this was a problem, but a family lived in a house that was right next to the roundabout on Main Street. And it was an old house, and it was kind of slanted down into the ditch, and it's right next to a flood plain. And they were flooding, and they had mold, and they had kids, and they were definitely low income. And they came, the whole family came, and they sat through the whole meeting, and at the very end, got up and told us, you know, "We're desperate, basically. Please help us. Please buy this house from..." And we ended up doing that and tearing the house down. I think we got three, two or three, yeah. And removed them out of the flood plain that was over there.
Built before FEMA was a thing.
Before there were rules against it, so. But, yeah, you know, that was just one that's always stood out to me where that family, you know, they felt like that was their last resort to get the city or the public to listen to things. So, I get not wanting to just let anybody do anything, and I think we should have some kind of clear, when you come in, that this is our expectation, but I wouldn't want to get rid of it, though. And when I started, it was five minutes, and it's gotten reduced to three, and now you have to sign up.
It's a lot you can say in three minutes, obviously.
Be efficient, be efficient.
Look...
That's right. There wasn't a, there wasn't a time that I'm miscellaneous.
Oh, gosh.
You're just taking every minute you can get, right? Yeah, I'm with you, all you guys here. I think that the miscellaneous comments, the majority of the ones we've listened to are pretty helpful and pretty on target and pretty, this is the time for the citizens to address the council and the city, redress issues. And I don't think we should limit it, because I don't think we've seen it where we should limit it right now. I just haven't seen it. There's, there's been a couple of times I've seen it, and, yeah, but there's only, I think it's a minority. It's not, it's not the rule, it's the exception here. They love coming, and they like using their three minutes to get things off their chest that have not been addressed or was addressed a couple of weeks ago, and this is the only time they can get to council. Don't forget, this is happening after, after hours, and sometimes working mothers, single mothers, single parents, single dudes like I was, we can't get the council to address the things that we want to at the time. And so, this is a perfect opportunity for them to use the miscellaneous comments to come back and say, "You know, I like what you did last time, but what about this?" So, at this point here, I just don't see anything that would be, that would lead us to limit the conversation, obviously, other than your gavel, if they're getting out of control or making it personal or bringing their guitar and their band, you know. So, I think we should leave it as it is for the time being. I just don't see a need to change it, because Steve's rights is that there's no other, besides a county, legislative function that the citizens can go and say and publicly state something after votes. Okay, and so this is a valuable tool for citizens. And this is, look, all they want is to be heard, an opportunity to be heard. And let's give them every opportunity. And only gavel when they get a little nuts and get a little personal and get going on the attack, or bring their banjos out and start humming tunes, so. This is my, this is how I see it, so.
I agree. And that's fine. It just needs to be brought up in discussions so that we're all on the same. We know where everybody is. We're on the same page.
So fair. To me, it sounds like maybe we take this '05 resolution and just do some slight updates.
That'd be great. I remember, you gave that to us in the early part of the handbook.
Yes, yeah.
And so, and my thought is, that's, that's the other part. That's what I've been thinking. What I want to do is hand these things, or put these things in the new handbook as it's being made. being made, so that we've got them. The idea was to be able to build a handbook so that we can pass down, and future councils can change them however they want to, but this is guidelines.
And a formal resolution adoption at least puts it back out in front of the public, so everybody sees it.
I think that's wonderful. Thank you for doing it. Yes, oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I was gonna add another one, perhaps, just about the sign up in general. So, are we currently allowing, because one of the compromises I had presented last year to Mayor Clark was, because I have just not ever agreed with having to sign up in advance online, just because the majority of years I was on council, you could come, and before I was on council, I would often sit in the front row and didn't always plan to say anything, but throughout the discussion, I sometimes would be like, "Oh, yeah, actually, I do have something that I could add to that conversation." So, I've been pretty resistant to the sign up thing, and I didn't, I haven't felt like since it was enacted that it's really reduced meeting times. You know, we had the long budget meeting in 2020, and then Mayor Clark enacted new meeting rules about signing up, and the next budget meeting was thirty minutes shorter. It still went to three o'clock in the morning. So, when we had a lot of people wanting to speak, that's just the way it is. So, I've not agreed with it, because I feel like it, it's just, basically, over the ten years I've been on council, it went from no time limit, and you could speak on the consent docket, and the agenda, non-consent and miscellaneous comment, and there was no sign up. And then Mayor Rosenthal made it so you couldn't, you could, you could sign up to speak on the consent docket, do the blue card. So, that was the first change, and then, and then adding the five-minute time limit, and then for all items, I think it was, because before, citizens could speak on any item without a time limit, so they could, like filibuster, basically. I don't recall that happening, but that could have happened. And then, and then Mayor Miller changed the time limit to three minutes, and then Mayor Clark kept the three minutes, added the online sign up only. And so, I've just kind of watched it get whittled down a little bit over the years, the public's opportunity. And so, I, and we've definitely had issues with people never been to a meeting before, they don't know about the sign up online, and they've come to a meeting, and they've sat in the back, and waited through the whole thing, and then miscellaneous comment at the end, and then they're told, this happened like last summer or last spring-
I remember this.
And told, "Oh, you can't speak," and was gavelled, and the meeting's over, and it's just like, "That guy just sat through this whole meeting to get up and say something. He had not, not a regular, not someone I saw come in here all the time." And it's just like, ah, left a bad taste. And I was just, this guy waited here the whole time, and we just, like, kicked him out of here, basically, because he didn't sign up online, you know, in advance. So, I didn't like that, and don't want to leave people with that impression of that that's how we treat people or do government around here. So, I've had my issues with the online sign up, but my compromise that I offered last year was, okay, we keep the online sign up, but allow people to still sign up. And if they come down to City Hall during the meeting, they could sign up.
They can.
They wouldn't be able to just walk up to the podium, but if they, so we are letting people sign up in the back during the, throughout the whole meeting.
The reason for the sign up-
Prior to the meeting starting, you can sign up.
The reason for the sign up is so that we know their name.
Sure, sure. I get that.
And then when she's doing minutes and stuff, because when somebody comes up and says, "My name's from, from, and you go..."
Yes, that's fine. I would, I think, during the meeting, I would like for people to have the opportunity to sign up. If like, you know, we're on item ten, and they're sitting there thinking about it, and they're like, "Hey, you know what? I do have something to say about item twenty-two." And, but the meeting's already started, so now they can't. So, I'm kind of like, I would like for there to be some opportunity still.
The other side of the coin is that we're actually a representative democracy, right? And so, it's not a true democracy, so not everybody has to speak to everybody, but they do have the right to tell us individually, and say, say it was, or go back to that family that was, that would be Ward Four, I guess, if they were down there. And they get ahold of their Ward Four council member, and the council member champions their cause to be able to do something. That's how I see government.
Sure, sure, yeah.
About the same thing. The ability to be able to say what you want in public and raise something, I see, but I see it more as a written thing, or more as the representative thing than I do doing it in public. The problem, and maybe it's a control thing in me, but it's controlling that meeting to make it as smooth as possible, to get the business of the people done. Because the remainder of the hundred and twenty-three thousand, other than the four or five that sign up, don't have an issue with what we're doing, or don't care, or can't get there. You know, so, one of those things. And so, all of us get emails, all of us get other, there are other ways to be able to do, we all have telephones. I know I get little things in emails, I imagine you do too, so-and-so called, and wants to talk to you about this. And so, you dial a number and talk to the person.
Yeah.
You know, so there's, there's, there's other ways. It just kind of depends on your theory of government, I guess.
I think with, like, with the example of that family, I don't think the council member at the time was ignoring them or anything, but there are residents that, I mean, they feel like, whatever reason, they feel like their council member doesn't call them back or something. And so-
You notice that?
Now you know why.
And so, I think some people feel like, though, just communicating with one of us, it can get lost, or ignored, or forgotten about. But if it's presented on the record, on camera, in front of the whole body, it's hard to be ignored then, because in the papers, probably gonna see it, and, you know, people watching it might see it. So, I think that, that is sort of, I guess, that is, I guess, why some people get to that point where they're like, I don't, I feel like nobody's called, nobody's calling me back, or these emails aren't getting, nothing's happening.
I like, I like to respond to that. I respond to all the emails, if they're constructive. But someone saying, just like, you are a Trump lover, you don't understand because you're, it does not add to what I can do for them. They're not taking it politically. So, you know, those things I would just ignore, but, you know, so.
Yeah.
Well, when it comes to sign up at the beginning of the meeting, or prior to the meeting started, like you said, a family that came up and talked about that, they had the respect to be here the entire meeting and waited for their time. We want to prevent somebody from coming in at nine o'clock-
Yeah.
And walking over and signing up, and, I mean, that's my, that's my only, you know, problem with that.
It is. I watch Ellen keep those up, and we're looking at those things together, because she's right here to me. And, and it gets squirrely. There's, there's things happening, and you're moving, and she's also moving other things. That's, that's a hard job, sits right here, and keeping things going and making sure that the buttons get pushed for us to vote, because it, there's, sometimes the buttons don't work. They just flat.
I think they're haunted.
Yeah. And, and so, I'll think everybody's voted, and only half the people have, and they've all pushed their button. It just, it didn't-
My lawyers didn't even show up last time. It was like, I'm here, I'm here.
And I'll check with the other city managers tomorrow too, and talk to them about, you know, limits on public comment, and what do they call it, and just to see how it's being done in our neighboring agencies.
It's just good discussion. It's, it's, it's a good thing to figure out what, how do we want to make soup.
I just devil's advocate to what you just said, because, I mean, I think you're, you're right, we do. But I've, I've heard Councilmember Holm make a point before, that, you know, what about the person who's watching the meeting at home on YouTube, and they hear something, and they're like, "Well, I need to get down to City Hall right now and voice my opinion on this."
People do that.
So, I agree that we don't want to make that a regular occurrence, but the exception of the rule, I think, is always-
No jammies.
Part of that, for me, is, is too, just like, I feel like if somebody's willing to come down here-
Yeah.
That's kind of like, if they, if they're willing to take the time to come down here, then, it's like, but we give, we're giving preference to people that sign up online over people that might come down here in person.
Well, and there's an ADA thing with the online thing, too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not for getting rid of signing up or having it online, just kind of keeping in mind, based on all my past experience before I was on council as a member of the audience, and since, just, yeah, residents coming in, because they watched it on TV, and they're like, "Ah, okay, I'm coming down there. I know about this subject." Or just, yeah, someone sitting in the front row, like I was, you know, as a young guy, and listening to the conversation, and then not, not having planned to say anything, and not, but then it comes up and thinking, "Oh, yeah, then I just jump up into the podium."
That's what I was for, you could just jump up.
So, I'm for keeping a sign up, for sure, but I'd like to, I've always had, like, again, a preference for folks that are actually here at City Hall, that are, took the time to come down here.
I'll bet you a nickel if somebody came up and said, "I didn't get on the list, or I need to," they could get on.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you, that you've been asking if there's further comment from the public. I think that's, that's what I've, that's one of the compromises, too, that I asked about before, was just, last year was about like, ask, is there any, any final comment about this, just to be clear. And so, that covers everything, and I do appreciate that you've been doing that, so.
Well, it's opening up a soup can every time you do that.
Right, I know, I know, I know.
Everybody that, if you, I think everybody got their, their deal. Anything else?
If you three are available for a two minute, we'll, I'll share an idea with you about a-